Welcome everyone. This is the Jefferson County Commission. We're going to be talking about ambulance purchases, lease agreements, and potentially organizational structure that those would be utilized in. John, did you want to lead us off?
Sure, I can. I'll tee it up. Thank you very much. So we have three things on the agenda today. The first thing, we'll talk about Michelle Burner, Fire Administrator, introduced the EMS purchase. I was commissioned to purchase 10 ambulances to move ahead with this plan. We have brokered a deal with Shepherdstown and Citizens for the last three purchases. So I'm going to have Michelle run through with you what those amounts are and then a short recap of dollars spent to date on ambulances. So that, Michelle?
We met with Shepherdstown last week on August the 4th, and they have agreed to sell us one of their two ambulances. So we are included in your packet as requisition number 23014, related to equipment purchase from Shepherdstown Volunteer Fire Department in an amount of $230,000. That includes 2016 Ram, 4500 chassis, the power load system, stretcher, and the stair chair only. They have not decided what they're going to do with their supplies, and they do not want to sell their monitor or their vehicles. So I would need a motion to approve requisition 23014 for that purchase for $230,000. I recommend that it be funded with our grant funds.
I move to move motion to approve the requisition 23014 to purchase ambulance equipment in amount of $230,000 funded by our grant funds.
Second. Moving second, is there more discussion hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Mr. Jackson?
The second item on the agenda is requisition number 23015 for Citizens Fire Department Volunteer Fire Company to purchase a 2021 Ford F-550 Type One ambulance and a 2015 Ford F-450 Type One ambulance. They are going to sell us their related equipment and supplies for a total amount of $643,544. It did include copies of the DCI Solutions Appraisals that were received on both pieces of the department. I also recommend it to be funded with our grant funding as this is public safety equipment, it's eligible for those funds.
I move the requisition number 23015 for purchase of the ambulance equipment and ambulance equipment and supplies in amount of $643,544 funded by our grant funds.
Moving second, is there more discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Pulling up the information. We have two funds. She brought it, she don't have it.
Okay, so we budgeted $5 million for the EMS Emergency Medical Services System. We spent $220,000 at Bakerton, $293,000 for Friendship for two ambulances, that makes total three, $569,000 in Independent for another two ambulances, $290,000 to Blue Ridge for one ambulance, $310,000 to Atlantic Emergency Solutions to take over the purchase agreement, contract agreement for the purchase of a design build of a 2022 ambulance from Citizens, $230,000 from Shepherdstown for one, and then $643,000 to Citizens for two ambulances. We have total approved expenditures of $2.56 million. That leaves a remaining budget of $2.44 million. That remaining budget may be used for potential things such as, it's including but not limited to EMS facility purchases, additional equipment purchases, stopgap funding for additional staffing as approved by the EMS plan that was selected just last month. And that's everything I have on the remaining budget. Sorry. Am I able to get it happy if what it is that you can have? Get your G P.
Sure. We'll put that out there.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, I thought you said you couldn't hear, that's why.
No, 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 no. Usually it's I can't hear. I'll also put it out on county's website.
And I did email copy that. Yes. The second item on the list is the lease granted. We have sent each one of the volunteer fire departments a copy of a draft lease, and we would lease back, we would lease those ambulances back to those volunteer fire departments for a dollar a year. And each one of the fire chiefs has a copy and has had a chance to get back to us on any of their thoughts on that. The two suggested changes I would make, and you've got the draft in front of you, is language to include sending ambulances out for community engagement opportunities, fairs, parades, those types of things. The second would be to include language to transport patients to other county service providers. If we have to take an ambulance to another county, to be a hospital or another hospital, Winchester Hospital, we want to be able to do that as well. That would be included in the language.
Yes, and you might want to strike page five on the operations vehicles. It's operating vehicles in the state of West Virginia. That's where that language is. I'm sure you might, yeah.
Yeah. It doesn't really limit us. I don't think to operate in the state of West Virginia. But we might want to say something in case we need to transport someone to Washington County Hospital.
I was thinking for Winchester.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I'd like to, what we'll do is we'll make those two minor changes, and then we'll send that out to the fire chiefs that work through posts. We'll get it up on the website. Question, there's corrections.
There, I would also, there will also be a schedule attached to this that contains just certain specific things like the each vehicle's identification numbers, maybe a termination date, mislabeled things like that that are maybe unique to each individual angles.
And perhaps the equipment that's on that angle.
Yeah. You would have some separate.
Yeah.
Generally, maybe specific from now. He thinks.
Any other questions on the lease?
I would like to ask that the motion to approve permission for John to find all the commissions he have and if the volunteers have any minor changes.
I'm going to motion to Director, County Administrator, to present this to the fire chiefs with those two minor changes we just discussed and give our county administrator authorization to make any minor adjustments thereafter.
So you mean for the terms of the lease?
Yes. For the term.
The lease.
Okay.
Moving second, is there more discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? No questions.
Thank you for that. The last item we have today is, you know, we at the last meeting discussed several different options of how you could want this system structured. We have come up with three different options that I would like to lay out to you today. You have those in front of you, but I'm going to read those out for the record. And then we can have a discussion and apply hope today to get to a decision so we can go ahead and move forward with this program. Option one, to keep moving towards a rewrite of the current bylaws at ESA to reflect language that assures a well-balanced board with checks and balances in place to keep both you, the commissioners, and our constituents informed of how funds are being spent and revenues generated. At the same time, we would work to establish a departmental status to create what's called a first due area, eventually moving everything under the commission as a department. That is option one. Option two is to move to maintain the ESA structure, have Director Burner and his staff facilitate the paperwork to move billing under his directions, develop the appropriate MOUs with the individual volunteer fire departments for shared space, maintain the ambulance fleet and supply inventory along with any other necessary paperwork needed to facilitate the move. We also recommend that the current board structure and bylaws evaluated to reflect the well-balanced board with checks and balances in place to keep both you, the commissioners, and our constituents informed of how funds are being spent and revenues are generated. The third option would be to move to maintain the ESA structure and have Director Burner and his staff facilitate the paperwork to move billing under his directions, develop the appropriate MOUs with the individual volunteer fire departments for shared space, maintain the ambulance fleet and supply inventory along with any other necessary paperwork needed to facilitate the move. I would also recommend that the current board structure and bylaws be evaluated to reflect a well-balanced board with checks and balances in place to keep both you and your constituents informed of how funds are being spent and revenues generated. This scenario would also have the ESA create a first due area and establish themselves as a fire department under the current ESA structure. Let me preface by saying one thing I want to make about option one and option three that talk about creating a first due area and making, creating a fire department, is that would make us eligible for safer grant money. If we don't do that, we're not eligible for safer grant money, and I fear that we're passing up an opportunity for federal funds to begin what I would call a career firefighting status in Jefferson County. This plan, as I said before, is a precursor to career firefighting. We would never, and let me preface by saying, never discontinue the volunteer firefighting. It would be, one would supplement the other in the out years. So I wanted to lay those three out and open it up for discussion. And I have, we can talk about that later as well as the legal ramifications.
I do have a question. With these three different options, does option one, two, or three cost, is the cost to the county and the citizens of the taxpayers any different than one, two, or three?
No. None of these scenarios outlined today creates any burden to the current budget because any additional costs in the out years beyond the our allocations that we have currently will be supplemented by the billing revenue that we would take over.
And I mean, just for historical purposes, do we know how many times some of the history have we restructured the ESA?
So it was, it was, yes, it was an authority. At one point in time, I don't know the dates of that, and that was restructured then to become an ESA. So this.
And then the board, and the ESA board.
The board was restructured.
And the board was one time.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're authority, but ESA with two more restructure.
Total of three, almost, you know, of the managing entity.
And when I say I would, I would look at the current board structure, I would also look at the current bylaws in the board and, you know, make any changes that would give you a little bit more transparency to see money going out, money coming in, you know, just more transparency. Not that there's not transparency now, but we'll make sure that we see everything.
Under the path we're pursuing, we would be collecting revenue from ambulance calls, and that's a big difference. So we still have that process, Neil, Dan.
I have some of the, it was an authority from 95 to 2011, and then in the NSA board, I believe it was reconstituted in 2014. So now here we are again, 2022 reconstituted. Yeah.
And I'd like to invite Director Burner and to come up because I think we're going to have questions. And so you may want to come forth, Sarah, to maybe entertain any kind of questions that they may have. Put you right in the house.
We'll talk.
For a little bit.
I was going to say that.
I think, I think it's important that we hear from the ESA director because they're a very interesting part of this. They are the key part of this whole process. So I want to make sure that we hear exactly what they have to say as well and have a candid conversation. What would you like to add?
Well, I'm just, I'm going to just, I think this is in the bylaws. No, this is the ordinance. I mean, it talks about budget development. The ESA holds an annual public hearing for the purposes of educating and informing the public that in December, the Board of Directors meets in order to provide J C ESA sufficient time to consider any improvements, changes, anything regarding the budget. And then the board makes recommendations or sends the director to make recommendations to the county commission, anything budget-related with money coming in, money going out. So the board helps to have oversight over those finances and to try to make things as transparent as possible to the public.
Also want to, I also want to talk about timelines because I think that's important to understand what this looks like in behind. With option two, if we didn't really do anything, it's just continued to be NSA board. And Bob can probably clarify. That is quickest turnaround in any of these three. Correct?
Any plan that, I think, the way we've been looking at this issue is that we need the commission to make a decision about our structure before we can proceed with many of the things with the EMS transition. And so that's kind of, a large portion of that work has been on hold until we know what the ESA is going to look like, whether it's going to be in ESA or county department or, you know, who's named to put things in and apply for things and whatnot. And we do understand that many of, beyond the EMS transition, getting the safer grant, those kinds of things, no matter how we do it, that's going to take time. It's not going to be quick. And I think what I, what I see is because we're trying to make this decision that has a lot of questions about agency versus board or whatever, we're trying to get that made before we can do this big project transition that I understand that the commissioners want to have sooner than later. I'm afraid that if we say, okay, we're going to convert to a county department now, we're going to be rushing because we have to get that, you know, we have to get that done so that we can make this other thing that you're waiting on get done. And I feel like if we moved that major restructure decision process out after the EMS transition, it could, you know, be a little more methodical. That would be my suggestion. And I'm not saying I'm a fan of becoming a county department. I'm not. I think I've been open about that. But I can certainly swallow the idea a lot easier if it was we get the one big project that's before us complete and then pursue that major change. I don't know if I answered your question.
No, I think, so, just to clarify a little bit more, each one of these steps is going to take some time.
Yeah.
I think if we were just to keep it in ESA and not try to go with a first due area to create a fire department, certainly that's going to move along a lot quicker.
Yeah.
Okay? If we go with option three and option one, those processes are going to take a longer time. It could take out to a year. We did meet with the state fire marshal, the state fire chiefs commission last week at Cape and State Park because we wanted to seek their guidance on this. And they didn't seem to have any opposition to us creating a first due area, becoming a fire department so we could apply for safer grants. They thought that was a smart way to go. One of the other things I think that I, that we got from that meeting with them is that a lot of counties in the state of West Virginia are going through the same thing that we're going through. This is not, we're not an anomaly by any word. We are, everybody's going to be struggling with this. Probably the larger, more populated counties are going to be first out of the gate to deal with this. So, you know, Berkeley County is the first one that did it. I think a lot of eyes, a lot of eyes are going to be on us and how we proceed with this moving forward. Is there, is there a best way to do anything? There's pros and cons to everything. There really, really are. But today, we really need some good direction, as Bob said, because we want to be able to, we need to be able to hold the trigger on certain things to get things moving. I do want to preface my thing also that I applaud Bob last week because he did a marvelous job explaining to the fire, the state fire chiefs, what we do and what we're up against. And, you know, we reiterated several times to them last week that because we're a dual-trained county, we fight a lot of fires. His folks fight a lot of fires during the low volunteer hour times of the day. And there's a lot of that. And a lot of the other counties are going through the same thing. When the fire alarm goes off, the bell goes off, oftentimes we'll see two vehicles leaving the station. You'll see a fire truck with one individual, and you'll see an ambulance with one individual. And those are our ESA folks. So we are really a support arm for the volunteer firefighters in their mission to fight fires. And I think that's, that's a reality that I, you know, hats off to you guys because, you know, puts you in a very precarious role when you've got one person on a truck and one with an ambulance, and you go to a structured fire, and you're out there battling that by yourselves until whatever help comes your way, which, you know, different every day.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, and hopefully I'll remember them all. Because sometimes when I get to talking, it's going to go off turn and forget where I was. Maybe I'm the only one, but age sucks. I had no intention of making any kind of presentation at the state fire marshals. I really just wanted to see what the conversation when it was happening and whatnot. But I did feel obliged after the commission staff presented to get up and try and translate from business language to what my people, first responders, understand so that they could get a clear picture of what was being asked of them. The process of obtaining a first due area, you don't just apply for that or, you know, describe what you want. That involves, you cannot get a first due area unless the volunteer fire chief that currently has that area agrees to give it to you. So one of the seven fire chiefs would have to sign off on that. And Chairman Gino was pretty clear that any plan that we had, we really needed to have the, I don't want to say the blessing of the seven departments, but we needed them on board. And they repeated several times that, you know, it's one thing if there's one or two that aren't, aren't really in love with an idea, but you need to get those folks on board with you. There is, and the reason this, this whole thing comes about is that you need an FDID, a number, to apply for a safer grant through FEMA. And so what these folks asked for last Thursday was, how do, how can we get one of them handed any numbers? And the answer was, become a fire department, check all the boxes, get your first due area, that's how you get an FDID. So that is, seems to be the only course in FDID. Now, I spoke with Chief Watson yesterday, and he reminded me that the volunteers had presented suggestions that included where they would obtain using their FDID because the seven departments has one. They could partner with us and get, you know, apply for the grant with their FDID. I don't know any of the mechanics or technicalities of how that works or if the commission would be interested in that. But I do want you to know that there's that pathway potentially there. And of course, I mean, I think we're all adults, and I'm sure what you're thinking is, well, if we apply with a volunteer company, then don't they then control everything? And yet, we're going to be responsible for these people? And I asked Chief Watson those questions, and he said, well, there, you know, there would have to be a pretty good understanding going in what kind of the terms were going to be, and there should be a contract that explains that. You know, one of the scenarios that I gave him was, well, let's say we were to do this with Independent, talking to Chief Watson, and he's the chief of Independence. I said, so let's say, you know, you work with us and you apply for the safer grant with your FDID, and then we get into it and you find that we're going to place the staffing at Citizens. And then you said, well, no, 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 we're going to cancel the grant because we're not, you know, we didn't do, we did this to get staffing here, not somewhere else. And that's when he explained, there would have to be, you know, and he said, you know, we have to work out the legalities of it, if, you know, but assuming it could be. Some of this sort of laid that out from the beginning so that neither party could sort of change the rules mid-game. Now, I don't know if you're interested in that, I don't know the feasibility, but I felt obligated to just relay the information and conversations that I've had.
And you have to understand that safer grants are typically a declining grant, typically a three to five-year grant, meaning that, you know, first shift, you're only going to pay a certain sum, just use like 80, 20, and then it declines down. Until at the end of the five years, you're paying 100%. And they typically have retention clauses and typically have those planting clauses. And also, before you can even apply for a grant, you need to have a funding plan in place. And that's not something that fire departments have without commission backing.
Right.
So it just makes more sense to me if the commission's going to fund it, it should be the commission department because ultimately, that's a lot of money. Even to start one partial shift, it would be 1.6 to 1.8 million dollars. And that would grow over time. And that's a partial shift. That's just 12 people. If we wanted to fund a shift of just 12 people, it would be 1.6 to 1.8 million dollars. And by the end of five years, if the fire department isn't able to prove that they have a funding source to fund those five, you know, those 12 to 18 positions at the end of that five years, they're not going to get proof of that grant. That's why they can't apply for those grants because they don't have funding.
So, yeah, I have some questions. So the difference between option two and three is it would be the ESA being designated as a first student applying for that FDID to potentially invest.
Now, the option three.
Yeah. So that's the main, I think my one concern here is us fighting off more than we can chew right now. We're trying to get this plan rolled out and get this addressed. I know we're going to eventually need to address the lack of volunteers on the fire, but we got to get this EMS rate right now. What precludes, hypothetically speaking, if we selected option two six months from now, then ESA potentially applying to be designated as a first due on fire or something of that nature? Instead of trying to take all of this one at one time?
I can take that one. And I'll let Bob reflect on that too. There's, I think, those of us probably have comments on that. One thing you could do, Commissioner Jackson, is you could say, we're going to, we're going to go with option two, and then we're going to revisit this in a year and see where you are in a year after you've trans, after you moved everything over and, you know, done all your paperwork and everything. And then we could revisit this year and say, how's it working as an ESA? And, you know, do we want to go ahead and then apply for your first due area and get that designation as a fire department and then apply for safer grant? One of the things that I think that we have to remember about safer grant is, no grant is guaranteed ever, right? We just, and getting a first due area is no guarantee. I mean, that's a lift we're going to have to go look at. We're going to have to go do that, right? And some fire departments are going to have to cooperate with this. Whether it's Citizens, Independent, Bakerton, whoever. We could even create a first due area right out of the ESA headquarters, but Independent would have to enter into an MOU with us and say, we'll respond to your first due area. That's typically what the state told us last Thursday when we met with them. If that, if that makes sense. So that would be an option to take a look at that. So, that, that would be an option to, to take a look at that. And that way, you get the ball rolling now, right? We can start moving ahead with what we need to do. And in that case, one of the, one of the things we would have to do, we don't necessarily have to do, and I would look at our legal counsel, answer his question, is right now, all those 10 ambulances are heated to the camp. You owe them, they're yours. We could flip the lease over to a lease agreement with the ESA, and could, once they hit the go button, like say in six months, or we don't know how long it takes them to get that done, we could say, all right, now we're gonna lease those over to the ESA. Until such time, you made that decision of how you were gonna, how you were gonna move. Am I hitting the right cylinders on this, or?
Yeah, I mean, I suppose. Yeah, well, I mean, I'm sorry, I was looking for the, where, where you wrote the one, two, and three.
I have that.
To compare those, that's what I was, I was hunting for. As far as the, the ambulances go, yeah, it makes no difference as far as being able to do what you need to do. If the commission wants to continue to own those, if you have concerns about, you know, if the agency may try and have a yard sale and get rid of them or something, by all means, the commission can maintain ownership of them and lease them to the agency. It might, I don't know, it might even make more sense that way, since really it's gonna be part of the county's capital ally to replace them. And that keeps me out of that depreciation stuff that confuses the heck out of me. But, yeah, I think, I, I don't know that you're making a final decision. I think you're making a for now decision. In other words, if you say, okay, keep it, keep it an agency, nothing stops you from changing that a month from now, six months from now, or 10 years from now, you know? Likewise, if you're to say, okay, keep it an agency, but we don't want you to pursue the FDID right now, okay, it's just a matter of if and when you ever do, or, you know, for us to begin that. But, I mean, we could have done it all along. The reason that we haven't is because there, the, the agency's not in a position to pursue a safer grant. You know, you, you, you are our moneybags. So, and previous commissions have not, not really expressed an interest in the, in the safer grant thing at all. I do wanna say for the record, because I think I missed it earlier, I have no intention or no interest in trying to replace the volunteers in fire. First of all, it's, can't legally be done. Those fire chiefs are in charge of their jurisdiction, period. But secondly, there's an incredible amount of equipment out there already. It's very, very expensive to operate a fire department. We're, we're, we're going into the EMS business, and that's nothing compared to a fire that has zero revenue and extremely high cost. You know, you're looking at 200,000 for ambulance, and 800,000 for a fire engine, and 800,000's kinda cheap these days. So, there's a whole ton of equipment out there, and, and, and people and infrastructure, and I, I just, I know there's some concern among some people that the county is, and I'm not saying you are, but there is a concern that, well, is the county trying to take over fire? And my answer to that, number one, legally, that's not possible. Number two, it just isn't prudent. You need a tremendous amount of capital, way beyond what ARPA has, has provided you, and, and the staffing. You know, we, again, to compare EMS, because you guys have gotten a little, little bit versed in that here lately. It, it takes two people to staff an ambulance, it takes four for each piece of fire apparatus, and it takes multiple pieces of fire apparatus for each call. So, it is exponentially more expensive than that. I, I think many of the volunteers, all the volunteers understand that volunteerism has declined. That's not Jefferson County, that is all over the country. When will that hit, you know, the, the point where it switches? I don't know. I don't know if it'll be in my lifetime in Jefferson County, or I really don't know. You know, so the day may come when, you know, they, they ask for that, and ask for more, or to, okay, no, you do it, and we'll pitch in rather than the other way around, but that, that day is not, not here.
I think, I think we, we have to also, it's a foregone conclusion that if Jefferson County ever wants to get to the position of a career firefighter, in, in a career firefighter position, way in the out years, you're gonna have to try to figure out a revenue source for that, if you want. Whether that's a fire levy, fire fee, you know, whatever that looks like, six, seven, eight years down the road, that's, that's an issue that future councils are gonna have to grapple with. And I, and I just wanna be on record for saying that, because, you know, I don't want anybody to say, oh, it's not gonna cost anything. We can just work with what we have. We can't. As Bob mentioned, I mean, just replacing a tanker could be a million dollars. And, and so, capital replacement on fire engines is immense, and the depreciation is immense. So, it's, and the personnel is high, the training is intense. So, there's, it's a big lift, and way in the out years. Safer Grant is just, it's, it's forcing us as a county to work with the volunteer fire companies to come up with a comprehensive county-wide plan, what this thing's gonna, would look like. Because to apply for a safer grant, you have to have, you gotta have your county-wide plan. Because they're gonna wanna know what firefighting looks like across the entire county to, to even get the grant. And then the grant is just a, a, just getting you started, but forcing you to look at how you're gonna fund that in the out years. Right? I just, I can't decide that strongly. And so, I guess my thing is, you gotta start somewhere at some point in time.
Right. And I, I mean, I guess that's what I'm, I'm trying to convey or say too. We, we've gotta get the EMS rate, and we don't know how, if that's gonna be self-sustaining, or what we're gonna have to do to make adjustments for that. I don't think we're prepared right now to take on fire. And right now, it seems like the fire is a little bit of the hindrance to keep, that's keeping us from moving forward with the EMS.
Yeah, it's like, you're right, the knee bone's connected to the ankle. And, and everything, everything is connected. It really is, even down to the CAT system where the first response, first, it all, it all ties together. Because when you look at emergency services across the county, fire has to work with, police has to work with EMS. I mean, you guys all work in conscious with one another. You're all on the same radio frequencies, you're all, you know, responding to 911 calls. So, you know, to, to, to everything to work in conscious with one another, you need a good comprehensive plan that looks at 40,000 feet and drills down to 10 at some point. I mean, I think that's what the safer grant is gonna say. What does that look like?
Well, and, and our employees are already trained, we already have, over your fire. I think we're forgetting that fact. Our employees are already over your fire.
We are fighting fires.
Yeah.
A lot.
I also wanna say that the, the model, I believe this commission voted one, was for six staff, daytime five staff, and it was for full-time paramedics and EMTs, not for the plan that included staffing an engine or taking care of fire.
Where you were at was with the six staff ambulances during the day, five at night, each staff with two people. And, and I think that the plan that you were looking at, and I like picture myself on the car lot going, I really like that one, but the budget says, I gotta do this one. And I think that's what this all boils down to, is where I understood from the commission is, you're looking at the one that included staffing a fire engine somewhere in town, probably citizens. You were looking at that one going, well, we can't quite afford that, so let's apply for a safe, let's do this, this, the six and five. As I already said, let's, let's try and get safer money to get the funding to be able to staff a fire engine. And that's, I thought our plan was, that's what we were trying to do, was staff, just staff a fire engine. I don't, you know, it can be citizens' fire engine, or independent's fire engine, or if it's gonna be a volunteer fire engine, that was my understanding, not trying, I don't, I don't think any of us were trying to, you know, go buy, I don't know, purple fire engine and call ourselves, you know, Jefferson County Fire Department or anything.
In Berkeley County, they, they, the, the way they have it over there is the fire company, I believe, they work out of, of fire stations, so they, they're operating off of the county, the volunteer fire trucks, but they're paid fire staff. So, there's all different kind of models out there, that you can, you know, nothing is.
I do have a question. When is the safer grant due? Is it due in January?
It's due in January. So, that's kind of why.
Yeah. Well, that's where I was kinda going to, and then, and then we won't know for nine months afterwards if we received it.
Right.
So, technically, we will apply for it '23, we won't know till the end of '23. So, if we, if we don't go, if we don't go ahead and develop an FDID, then we won't be able to, we won't be able to ask for that safer grant until 2024. And then, by the time we get firefighters on the, uh,
It's three years.
Three years, so, yeah.
And there's no guarantee you're gonna get a safer grant the first time around?
Yeah, and then, and then, let's just say, we, we did on, in '23, and Betsy Terry, we said, well, we could, we don't have to accept it, right?
No, we don't have to accept it, and if we apply for it and we don't get it, we're not committed to starting a career fire yet. But ultimately, without that FDID, we can't even apply for it, and we're three or four years away once. So, two years from now, we make that decision, it's gonna be five years before we can apply for a safer grant.
Yeah, yeah.
It might be faster though, on the first hand.
I agree. I agree.
So, a tough, a tough decision for the commissioners to make. But for us, you know, we bought ten ambulances, we're poised and ready to go. So, you know.
I tell you, I mean, I've been, I've been thinking this a lot, and given a lot of thought, and we need to, we need to, I believe we need to make the decision today, and just so we can move forward, and I'm, I'm just gonna push a motion out there, if it goes, it goes, and I will go to another option. I like to move a motion to accept your, John, this was option one that he presented.
I'll second that. Is there more discussion?
Yeah, it's just, and I have debated back and forth. Seems like the transition would be much easier just keeping it as ESA, that name and all that structure. But I think farther down the road, it will be better as a department. I mean, and none of this is gonna be easy for anyone, and I'm very concerned about the staff, because I know they're worried about transition to the department. But I, I do think it's the ultimate solution. We've, we've, we've redone the board, you know, reconfigured it several times. And I'm not saying it's board members' fault or anything, this is just a tough nut to crack, and it all costs lots of money. And it's, it's, you know, I, I do think, you know, I haven't done it in the last couple of years, but, you know, our county spends the highest proportion of its budget on hiring EMS than any other county in the state. And, you know, we have been blessed with video lottery and some gambling revenues, but that is not a way to support emergency services. And I, you know, I think we have to realize we're dealing with the people who are at the table today, and Zoom call, and some of those faces can change next year. So, I don't know.
I'm, I'm just gonna chime in and say, I think they, in my opinion, the least disruptive and the quickest route would be option two or option three. And option three, I would say that we need to eventually not immediately have ESA create or apply for the FDID at first due. I think option two's the least disruptive, and we could potentially get ambulances well on the road from the county. We could probably get one on the, from the county immediately, since the county's already running the ambulance on Blue Ridge Mountain. I believe the ESA has, or the ambulance authority, when that was established, had an account with MCA for billing. I don't, I think, so I think the least disruptive, quickest, quickest rollout would be option two or, or three, and not that the safer grant is the hindrance for us taking care of EMS immediately.
Well, and, and I understand that point of view, that's why I've been going back and forth. But I don't think it's the ultimate solution. And I, I know it's, it's gonna be messy. I mean, it's, it just is. Not that that's anyone's fault, it's just gonna be a big change structurally. And like I say, we, I think, you know, an independent board handling this much of the county budget, county commissioners, I know there's one that sits on the board, but, you know, we need more say. You know, it's going, how that money is being spent. We've also gotta realize, the ambulance fee, that's something we have the power to do, not to board, but they can bring proposals to us, so.
Well, that's another point of discussion too, is the ambulance family. If this eventually becomes a county department, county residents pay taxes. I don't see them paying an ambulance fee. I think that would be, I mean, the, the county department would really have to take a look at, can you sustain the payroll?
The ambulance fee, I believe, is still with its department. That doesn't change.
I'm just, as a resident, I would say, I pay taxes if we take care of it.
Well, and I, I know many of you are.
That's with you now, I get emails like that now.
Yes, that's right. And, and, you know, I prefer, you know, in hindsight, ambulance fee was faster to do when we needed to do it, but a levy would be, to me, more constituent buying, but would we get it? So, you know.
There's no easy answers on this one. Constitutionally, we have certain departments who are required to fund with real estate taxes. And the state of West Virginia recognizes that real estate taxes alone are not enough, personal property taxes are not enough to pay for all of the services that we actually provide, which is why they allow for fees for permits, for ambulance fees and things like that. So, the, the state recognizes that real estate taxes and personal property taxes alone are not enough to sustain government services. But we do have other options available to us in the form of a levy, the excess levy, or additional fees, which is fire.
Well, and also, maybe this department will remove the citizen representation that sits on this board. I would just say that does give citizens an opportunity to speak up and chime in on the, the budget and representation from their areas on the problems that are going on. And that will remove, when it, when it eventually becomes a county department, will remove the citizen input and have the citizens involved in it.
Will it though?
If there's no more board.
Well, they can still participate in elections, they have public confidence, there's still plenty of avenues that citizens can take.
Elections are every two years.
Well, how long is the board on it?
It's three years, but there's four people, four citizens on that board right now. So, it gives the citizens an opportunity to be engaged in what's going on, and how their dollars are being spent, particularly around the fee.
I couldn't read the team leader, but I do wanna ask, since they brought up that we've had, those are, you're interested in more transparency and having, spending the money appropriately, are there any issues that I'm unaware of with transparency at the ESA, or misappropriation, or you know, is a bad decision made on money at the ESA?
No, no. That, that was not what my comments were referring to. I just know at times, it's been hard, very hard to get business done and move ahead, given my past years on ESA.
This is Commissioner, uh, I guess I, I just wanna say, or I have a question for Director Burner. Kinda with this whole discussion, I, I think that you've done a really great job at the ESA. And my main concern in all of this and in our transition is kind of our recruitment and the retention of our staff. And I know you had mentioned before about, about recruiting. I was wondering what those numbers were again. And you had said something about you aren't receiving as many applicants, or do you have concerns that it would affect morale with a board versus the department?
Change affects morale, and we're currently living through that since February 17th. When the Fitch study was prevented, there's been a big question mark hanging over all of my people that of my people. They don't know where they're going to work, when they're going to work, what's going to happen, what they're going to be allowed to do or not do. So it's already, as I said, destabilized and unsettled. And now we've kind of put a pause on getting towards, you know, defining some of those things so that we can explore yet another dramatic change of taking them away from being an agency to being a county department. And I'm not, I don't know what the morale would be. I can tell you the position of the employees, as I understand it, is that they don't know enough currently about what would be impacted and how it would look and what the effect would be to them to say whether they do or don't support it. And that's another reason why I would prefer that we worked on one big project at a time, get through the EMS transition and then open that up. And, you know, then you could really identify all the details and then so they know what to expect. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that does.
All right.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Passes three to two, selection optional. Anything else coming for the question today?
No.
Hearing none, if there's no objection, we're adjourned.